I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
I'd ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence for Aristia Georgerson, a 4th grade teacher in the Clinton Public Schools for 35 years, passed away recently. This is the October 21st meeting of the Clinton Public School Committee. We have a large, and thank you for being here, group to recognize some important people. So I wonder if the committee would be willing to make a motion to take the agenda out of order and put the important celebrations first.
So moved.
Second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, let's move right into our celebrations.
We'll start with the elementary school student of the month.
I want to introduce Leslie DeVivo. Leslie DeVivo is a 4th grade student at CES who lives in Clinton with her mother Angela, dad Andrew, and brother Andrew. Leslie is being honored for her hard work in the classroom and her achievement on the semester's MCAS assessment. Leslie's 3rd grade teacher wrote last year a report card. Leslie not only works well with her classmates, but is a natural leader. She continuously offers to help and support a student who's beginning to learn the English language throughout the day. In class this year, Leslie reads above grade level and has an insatiable appetite for learning. Her 4th grade teacher, Ms. Mason, has expressed to me that she often reads one to two years above grade level. Her MCAS scores of a 560 in math, which is a perfect score, and a 555 in ELLA mean that she scored exemplary in every category. I believe Leslie will be an amazing student for the Clinton Public Schools in the years to come. Tonight, we want to congratulate Leslie with a certificate of achievement signed by the school committee and Dr. Meyer. Congratulations for all the newbies.
Congratulations, great job.
I think we'll go high school next, since Ms. Sargent has two.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Sarmax, Clinton High School. Tonight, we have Shining Hao. Shining was nominated by Ms. Jen Dickinson and Ms. Ellen Welsh. They actually asked if they could come and speak on her behalf.
Good evening. Ellen and I are thrilled that Shining has been named Student of the Month for Clinton High. She is a fine example of a student who has risen above significant language and cultural barriers to become an active leader in the CHS community.
Shining is a junior. She has some advanced classes, and she earns As and Bs in all of them. She's a very, very active member of the Clinton High community. She's everywhere. She's sometimes behind the camera over there. She's in robotics. She's in Step Up to Excellence. She's in, hold on, I got a sheet. Student Council, the AV Club, the math club, and First Robotics. She's just in everything. She's just a very, she's just such a great kid to have in class because she's so personable and she's so willing to help out others. And a lot of times, she's the one who needs help, but she's willing to put herself out there first. She's just, she's just awesome.
She also donates her time to the community by serving meals at Wheat. She plays piano at the Senior Citizen Center, and she plays piano at the NHS ceremonies here in Clinton. She came to Clinton from her native China when she was in 7th grade. We like to think of her language success as success at Clinton High's ELL program. Unlike a lot of other students who have other speakers to help them along, Mandarin is not one of those languages. So she's a standalone example of diving in full feet first into the culture. She's demonstrated tenacity and discipline. She has that never give up attitude with whatever she puts her mind to. So we're real pleased that she is Clinton High's Student of the Month.
Indeed. Congratulations.
Great job.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, great job.
And now do the middle school student.
So our student of the month is Katie McManus. So Katie, I think, was a little shocked when her mom told her that she was student of the month because if you didn't know Katie, she's pretty shy, and she kind of sticks to herself, but yet she has the biggest heart when it comes to helping everyone and anyone. So Katie has really taken to the FLAC programs that we have at the Clinton Middle School. This past summer, she volunteered her summer vacation days to come in and help out during the extended school year. She came in probably one or two days a week. She gave thoughtful and meaningful birthday cards and gifts whenever a student had a birthday in the FLAC. She advocates for FLAC students' birthdays to be announced, like we announce all students' birthdays all through the Intecom. And she personally goes down to celebrate their birthdays with them. She references them as my students, as her friends or her kids. She adores them and admires them as they do her. She is calm, sweet, and understanding. When a friend is having a difficult time, she stops, observes, and simply tries to relate. She is in with their nicknames, the FLAC students, and we have, they have given her Kitty Cat as her Tabby Cat name. She's a great contributor to the Autism Awareness Month that we celebrate at the Clinton Middle School. She brings now a friend with her, Tabitha, who is also starting to join, and that's due to Katie. And it's nice to see Katie make sure that she gets over to see them at lunch, too. And today, the biggest smile on her face just knowing that she can go and sit, and she has a conversation with them, and it's just the best thing ever. She goes down in the morning to check in, to make sure that they've all arrived and that they're all in, whether it's to get, she also goes down to get a pass for wind. She likes to spend her wind time down in the FLAC room assisting Ms. Dorsey and the students. There's never a time she doesn't stop and say hi to the students in the hall or throughout the building each and every day. It's simply a wonderful part of their routine, and it's helped Ms. Dorsey's kids to begin to say hi, too. Ms. Dorsey's students will simply say, she's talked to us, so it becomes a big deal. She also helped a 7th grade student last year at the end of the year who started to struggle with being able to communicate, but her calmness, like her caring attitude really allowed him to open up, and we would have to find Katie at times to be able to go communicate with him. This year, she is president of the Student Council, which is a big deal. She doesn't realize how big of a deal it is with 640 students in the Clinton Middle School. And I also want to let you know she'll be heading to Washington, DC with us in two weeks with her class. So I am so honored to have Katie McManus nominated by Ms. Dorsey and several other teachers, as well as myself and Mr. Seed as our student of the month. So congratulations.
Thanks for being such a great role model.
Congratulations, great job.
And our staff member of the month is also from the Middle School, so.
So a couple of years ago, Dr. Meyer came to me and said, there's this wonderful program called Project Lead the Way, and we need to bring it to the Middle School. But you have to find the right person, because it's change for whoever takes it on. They have to go out for training. They're going to have to give up time over their summer. And we kept going back and forth, who's the right person? And finally, we found the right person, and it was Brenda DeSessa. So she embarked and embraced this wonderful idea of going to the training for Project Lead the Way during the summer about two years ago. And I know the first session went really well. She had a great time, and it was, she came back glowing. Not that I've never seen Brenda glow, but she was glowing, like, this is it, this is the best thing. And then she became sick and missed the second class that took place that summer. But still, we had to tell her she couldn't go because I think deep down, she didn't care if she was sick or not. She was going to take that trip to Connecticut and attend the class, but we talked her out of it and told her that there'd be another time that she could take it. So last year was the first year that Grade 8, we piloted automation and robotics. This allowed students to start to delve into what is automation, what is robotics, and they had to build different things. But the best part was is they had to build a pull toy. And she brought 14 students to a showcase down in Boston. And although we didn't win first prize, we did very well considering it was our first year, and several of the schools that were there had been doing it for several years. So coming back, the students, as well as Mrs. DeSessa, were very thrilled with the results. This past summer, Mrs. DeSessa went and took the second course, which is called Design and Modeling, and this is for Grade 6 students. But over the year, we also had Ms. Zankra doing some 6th grade, 5th grade maker space, kind of a little bit of Project Lead the Way, and Mrs. DeSessa kind of coerced her, convinced her how wonderful this is. And we had Ms. Zankra, Mr. McGuire, and Mrs. Oliver also go out this past summer for training. So we can't thank Brenda enough, but the most important part that I'd like you to know is Brenda has now been nominated as a finalist for Rookie of the Year for Project Lead the Way. And today, she was at WPI, and she was a panelist for the pull toy showcase. We are very pleased with her Project Lead the Way enthusiasm and what she has done for the Middle School. It has made a difference. We also want to congratulate her on the STEAM for Girls program that she co-founded with Mrs. Kaplan a few years ago, which has opened the doors for many of our girls in Grades 6 to 8 who are looking to become engineers. She brings in females who are in the science field to be guest speakers and role models for our girls. These guest speakers come in and bring an area of science that they're working in, and sometimes they get to build with them. Sometimes they get to see PowerPoint presentations to see what's out there for females, and it's been such a great asset to the girls. And several of them have gone on to summer classes at WPI as a result of this. So we want to thank her for her enthusiasm and energy for both Project Lead the Way and STEAM for Girls, and this is the reason she is the Employee of the Month this month.
Hold on, we've got to.
We've got a photo off.
I know, Brenda. I know you paid me big bucks.
Sorry, Brenda, you know that wasn't going to happen.
That's right. I have my lunch.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So now, I will just say, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the celebration portion of our evening. You're certainly welcome to stay for the business portion of our evening, but we will not be offended in the least if you choose to.
If you choose to sneak out for photographs at this time, that's fine. It's entirely up to you.
It's just we really go back to approval of those.
You've got to stay. You have to stay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Can we have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second that motion?
Mary. Motion being made and seconded to approve the bills. Any discussion?
The ma'am.
Thank you. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held October 7th?
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous as well? Thank you. Sophia, do you have any words for us tonight? I'm sorry that we reduced your audience to.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm doing pretty good, thank you. On October 11th, Clinton High School has sadly hosted their last blood drive with the Red Cross and collected 44 units. Though that is one of our lowest amounts collected, the Student Council worked their hardest to ensure the community and students donating were comfortable and cared for. On October 17th, a few Student Council members had a Central West representative in order to see if we can continue to host blood drives as partners here at Clinton High School. Last Friday, during the school day, the CHS band, football team, and cheerleaders went down to the elementary school to entertain the kids and garner interest in extracurriculars once they reach high school. The CHS and CES students alike both had a wonderful time talking to each other and making friendships, also giving the students an insight into the high school life. The same afternoon, Clinton High School had their homecoming football game. With a score of 43 to 15, it gave the students' school spirit flowing and got them excited for what was to come the next evening. The following day, the Gols and Goblins run took place at Central Park to not only benefit gale force, but it brought the community together for a friendly 5K race with 8th grader Ian Johns taking the title of first place in 17 minutes and 34 seconds.
Wow.
Later that night, Clinton High School's annual homecoming, hosted by the Class of 2021, was a huge success. With the gym decorated in fluorescent lights, the students dancing were the only ones glowing on the dance floor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anything from the PTA tonight?
Not PTA, but CPA.
CPAC, please.
Good evening. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November 5th, in the CS library. We had a make and take sign-making fundraiser held last Wednesday night. We made $140. We have one scholarship paid for and $80 towards our second one, so we're more than halfway there, and we're only in October, so.
Good job.
And our Clintonopoly fundraiser has been mailed out to local businesses and organizations. The deadline is Friday, November 22nd. And that's it. Thank you.
Anything from the CTA tonight?
Since you have to hear about the high school, great things that are happening, I just wanted to share with you, this morning, we started the I2 Learning STEM Week, where each class has a different activity. I was paired in the 6th grade. We all went to two-day training this summer on our own time. And so today, in the 6th grade, we, they became first-year medical students, and they had an emergency room patient, and they had to decide what they should do for her, coming in with a list of complaints. And we found that our 6th graders don't know much about the human body or medicine at all because the activators didn't go very well this morning. But that meant it was open sailing for lots of new ideas. So we spent the day today talking about blood and the components of blood, and they made samples of blood with gelatin and beads and discs. And they also, the patient that they got to meet has sickle cell disease, so they talked about how red, healthy red blood cells actually live for 60 to 90 days and around and run through veins and arteries very easily. And they learned that sickle cells, you know, morph their shape and only last 10 to 20 days, and they were fascinated by that data. And then we made a model using some cardboard tubes that they had to cut. So we got some math in today, and a little bit of engineering in how you make a Y-shaped artery that branches off. And some of them struggled with that, of how do I get the tape to stay? What angle do I do? But they enjoyed making their plateo healthy cells and then having them run through and see how they actually did the sickle cells gummed up.
Robyn, there's a community showcase for this, right?
Yes, there is a community showcase, and it's next Monday, I believe, from 1:00 to 2:15.
I believe so, yeah. So anyone?
1:00 to 2:15?
Yes.
And they'd be able to see that.
Yeah, I was going to say they're public.
Yeah. Okay.
And tomorrow, we're dissecting sheep's hearts, so.
Well, my daughter's in the 6th grade, and that was all she could talk about today over dinner. The dissection part could have probably waited till after dinner, but just to say, she's excited about the week, so kudos.
I think that's the one thing that when we asked them what they would like to learn this week, that was kind of the overall theme, whether they just didn't know what else they'd like to learn or whether they said, I'd like to do some dissection. We'll see how many of them don't turn green tomorrow.
I do think it was nice, it was great to see the large number of teachers, like you said, that participated in the I2 training over the summer. You know, it wasn't something we could require, it was something we offered. I think I2 did give a small stipend type thing for going.
We haven't got it yet.
Okay. They promised you one, right?
They promised.
But we did have a large, a large number of teachers attend, and it looks like a lot of those activities this week are going to be just, you know, just exciting, engaging STEM Week activities. I think the item might even be able, be working on a STEM Week story, so.
Well, in this, this summer, Ms. Carey and Mrs. DeSessa and myself, we, we went up to Nessetis at Middle School up in Pepperell. And it was nice to talk with teachers from other districts, you know, about what they're doing in their curriculum, and it was nice to see another school and see what their labs looked like. So it was two days of really packed training, but it was good. And then, just on the CTA stipend notes, we're anxiously awaiting your proposal, and we assume that we'll have it sometime this week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we have anything under public comment tonight?
So just to add to that, I just wanted to mention Ian Concanon, the person that is the director of I2 Learning, was out in the Middle School today visiting and was very impressed at, they give the teachers the curriculum, but what they did with it, he was actually taking pictures and asking if it was okay to bring back and share with other school districts. It was amazing. We made it very accommodating for our ELL students, so that whatever was done in English, they had in their language as well, thanks to Mrs. Rulo and Ms. Warren. And the engagement, the excitement, I got 10,000 steps today just within the four hours, and it was really nice to see because they were so excited. You leave 5th grade to go to 6th grade, and you like, it just picked you up even more. And then when you got upstairs to see 7th and 8th grade, everybody was doing something different, but it was just very emergent and very nice to see. So yes, but 6th grade is dissecting tomorrow, so I probably will skip that in the morning and go later in the day. So thank you for allowing us to do so.
Oh, thank you for sharing. Great work. Anything else?
Okay. Dr. Meyer? All right, so we have one resignation. Kelsey Alloway was an instructional assistant at the elementary school. Just had a few different life circumstances, medical circumstances, and was needed to resign. So like I said, we've had some, that's probably the hardest staffing area we've had this year, is just trying to keep the IAs at the elementary school and filling those positions, but we're working on it. We keep finding new ones. The next thing is the CHS Spain trip, so.
Hello, I'm Michelle Elliott, and I'm a Spanish teacher here at the high school. And Dr. Meyer approached me last year to say that it would be a nice thing to present this trip to the school committee, because I don't think traditionally that's happened. So our trip that we have planned is for April 2021, and it is Paris, Barcelona, to include the new French program here. So students who are currently enrolled in either French II or Spanish II or higher are eligible for the trip. So I, I don't know how much information you want, but these are the.
I think you might need school committee chat, right?
So.
New subcommittee, Tina, new subcommittee.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thanks.
So I just, this is just the financial information, the cost of the trip, and then a few side trips that we've added on, the insurance, and then the total at the bottom there, at $32.44. And if anybody's interested, I also have the itinerary here. It's three nights in Paris, three nights in Barcelona. It includes the airfare, all their admissions, 24/7 tour guide, insurance, breakfast and dinner, and their transportation on the high-speed train from Paris to Barcelona. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So just to clarify, so April 2021, basically you're looking for the week of April vacation, correct?
Correct.
So this trip takes place, I mean, at most, they might miss, they might get out early Friday to get to the airport.
Correct. So we request a Friday departure, but we could possibly leave Thursday or Saturday. So they do it, you know, based on price.
And I think, you know, obviously that this is kind of a well-established tradition at the high school. They've been doing these trips over April vacation. I think this past year was, kind of alternates, right? It's like one that kind of goes to Spain and then one that goes to.
Right, so last year, we did Spain, and then this year, they're going to Ireland. And so next year, we're including the French program, too, by doing the two countries.
And then since it's, since it is, you know, it's, it's one of those kind of things where I think when it started, it might have been sort of a fine line of, is this a school-sponsored trip? Is this not a school-sponsored trip? It goes over April vacation, but I think clearly it's been embedded enough in us that although we do it with, through a tour, tour company and stuff, we are sending our chaperones to connect to our world language department, that kind of stuff. So given the fact that it is a, basically a de facto school-sponsored trip, even though it's over a vacation, we felt it was necessary to bring it to the school committee so that, this is international travel, so.
So are you seeking approval from the school committee?
I think.
Before they initiate the fundraising aspects of it?
Yeah, I think now, because I think that's why I wanted to bring it, since it's not for this year, it's for next year. But as they kind of start building everything, we just, if the, if the school committee is, you know, willing to approve it, I think that would be a nice motion so that they can move forward.
So forgive me for not knowing this, but what is our current policy around?
You were going to ask for that. I believe we're supposed to, but.
Overnight trips?
Yeah.
Okay. So at minimum, we probably need to just make sure we're clear on what that language is. As it is April 2021, can, can we just look this over and invite you back to our next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, but I just, I know at some point.
And so next year, we're including the French program too, by doing the two countries.
And then since it's, since it is, you know, it's, it's one of those kind of things where I think when it started, it might have been sort of a fine line of, is this a school-sponsored trip? Is this not a school-sponsored trip? It goes over April vacation. But I think clearly it's been embedded enough in us that although we do it with, through a tour, tour company and stuff, we are sending our chaperones, disconnect to our world language department, that kind of stuff. So given the fact that it is a, basically a de facto school-sponsored trip, even though it's over a vacation, we felt it was necessary to bring it to the school committee so that it's international travel, so.
So are you seeking approval from the school committee?
I think.
Before they initiate the fundraising aspects of it?
Yeah, I think now, because I think that's why I wanted to bring it, since it's not for this year, it's for next year. But as they kind of start building everything, we just, if the, if the school committee is, you know, willing to approve it, I think that would be a nice motion so that they can move forward.
So forgive me for not knowing this, but what is our current policy around?
You were gonna ask for that. I believe we're supposed to, but.
Overnight trips?
Yeah.
Okay. So at minimum, we probably need to just make sure we're clear on what that language is. As it is April 2021, can we just look this over and invite you back to our next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, but I just, I know at some point, because I know, I do know it is overnight trips need to approve, because I know we approved the, when the cheerleaders went to Virginia Beach, we approved that as well. So I know we want to make sure that we're, you know, doing that stuff, so.
So let me just be very, very clear. Thank you for doing this. Thank you for giving this opportunity to our students. Thank you to all of the coordinators who, who, you know, provide extensions of the curriculum well beyond the classroom. It is very much appreciated. I just want to make sure we're on solid footing in terms of what we have to do for you and for us and for the town, so. Does the committee have any questions?
I just always wondered how, oh, excuse me.
Yeah, good.
Sorry. I just always wondered how it worked. You have to be a Spanish or French student enroll in order to.
Yeah, and at a certain level.
In order to be, in order to even be able to participate.
Correct. And you have to be in good standing with the administration, you know, and attendance and.
Okay.
Guess I'm out of that trip.
So to Matt's question, how many students is that normally around?
It depends. Last year, we had 12 that went to Spain. I think they have about 20 going to Ireland. I know there are about 15 interested in, in next year's trip. And then in past years, there would be, Ed Howard, who recently retired, took 40 a few years ago.
I know my husband went to France in high school in, what, '77, and he still talks about it. So it's definitely something, memory for them forever.
It gets a lot of them interested in doing study abroad.
So I guess the only question would be, is there anyone who, there's no one who objects to the trip? Oh, okay. So it would really be just a matter of if we wanted to approve it now or if we wanted to wait? Because I think the policy probably says we need to have a list of more approximately, like the number of kids going and the chaperones, I believe that's what it says. So we'd need to get you that information for a final approval?
It's a 6:2:1 chaperone student ratio. So for every six students that enroll, there's a chaperone spot earned.
But fundamentally, I mean, if we're gonna ask her to provide that information at a later date when she has a better idea of who's going, but we want to give her the okay right now to pursue reserving and fundraising and getting kids to go. Is that, is that my understanding?
Absolutely.
Insofar as it doesn't conflict with our policy that is not in front of us, yes. Would someone like to make a motion to?
I'm happy to make that motion.
Tentatively approve of the trip.
Absolutely.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Any, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll sign up for that chaperone list.
Yeah, yeah. And again, thank you for all of your efforts and those to come clearly.
All right. So the next part is just an update on the technology aspect of the strategic plan. So I actually have Mr. Sarmak and Mr. McCackren are going to give a brief presentation. That's kind of why everyone with the split audience here tonight, so you can see the, everyone, everyone in the audience have a chance of seeing that. So really, you know, if you look at the primary goals, it started by moving to one-to-one access, grades six through 12. We've started with grades nine and 10 this year, reallocating 50% of the instructional material budget to digital content. We actually started doing a little bit of that this year, switching over to more digital-based instructional media, adequate staff. We did add an additional technology person this year and the consistent allocation of funds. And I think that's, that's something we can do budget season. But the one-to-one initiative's been a big undertaking and I just wanted to have these two gentlemen give you a quick overview of how that's going.
Well, everybody, as Dr. Meyer said, we're just gonna give you a quick overview of what's going on at Clinton High School with the one-to-one initiative. Mike, you're up.
Okay, so.
Good job.
I'll go over the hardware part of it. I was lucky to move over to the high school this summer. And we set up 269 Chromebooks and handed out to, actually, when we last spoke, we were only gonna hand them out to the freshmen. And we were lucky enough to be able to do class of 2023, class of 2022, all our ELL students and all our dual enrollment students, which are the eighth graders that come up, come up here. And I just put a few pictures in. We were able to set up a student help desk in, in the tech office upstairs. And I have students, a student there every period, man at help desk and helping with other students who have to sign out Chromebooks or charge their Chromebooks or even help out, they're helping me fix older Chromebooks also.
What's really good about that is I went up there one day and one of my old students was actually fixing a Chromebook, he was replacing the screen. And I said to him, I said, Louis, how do you do that? He said, oh, Sir Mac, it's easy. All you gotta do is, he starts going through, I'm like, that's fine, go ahead and you do that. But it's great, they're actually learning something. And we're trying to get that into, we're taking it from the curriculum committee to make it a course for these kids, so they can get course credit for it, because they are doing it every day diligently. Good stuff, thanks, Mike.
And this was the HP 11-inch Chromebook that we handed out to everybody. And we gave the students a choice of a case or a sleeve, and the sleeve was a big winner.
The sleeve fits in the back. I tried to sell the sleeve, because it fits in your backpack, right? I mean, it fits right in your backpack, you throw it in there, protected, it works well.
And we've had very few issues. I am surprised how smoothly this has, has worked out, so.
Okay, thank you. So that's, that's where we are right now. Moving on, that was me when I was creating this. So this summer, we had some teachers come in and create some online curriculum to go with the one-to-one. Even though I have my glasses on, I have to get closer. U.S. History, we had almost the entire department there and they worked on, they have a brand-new curriculum in, for U.S. History 1 and 2. It's entirely online, the book, everything is online, it's free through Bryce University. It's unbelievable. They did the research, they recreated their curriculum, so it's all there. Environmental science, bio, English, health, Spanish one, intro to physics, accounting, 1 and 2, and marketing are all using these as one-to-one curriculum online. So they're pulling things online, so it's total, it's good stuff. Now, the entire curriculum for some of those isn't all online, but they're pulling things from online to use. So the Chromebooks get used that way, so it's not just replacing the pencil and paper. Here, we talked about Google Classroom. At Clinton High School, all teachers are using Google Classroom, which is great. And Google Classroom is a place where students can just go and access their work. Teachers post their work there and the different things they can post are questions, worksheets, videos, lesson plans, links, lesson directions, paperless work and grading. Paperless work is awesome, because they can do peer editing, where they can share between peers, they can answer questions before they turn it to the teacher. And by turning it in, all they do is they click a button and it goes to the teacher. It's almost like the student just handed it away. Teacher can now grade it and return it, but it's all online, paperless, so there's nothing going back and forth but click a button. And then there's forms of tests and quizzes. In a minute, I'm gonna show you a little bit about what it looks like from a teacher's perspective on Google Classroom, but I don't want to go yet, because it takes a second with the technology freezing. Lastly, we're looking at early college. Dr. Meyer said, you know, bring it up and let you know. We're talking about early college at Clinton High School. Right now, we're working with Quincyman Community College and we have, for next year, we're gonna implement juniors and seniors taking or receiving 12 mass transferable credits. And what that means is they'll take courses here. Any course they take here through Quincyman will be 10 high school credits and three mass transferable credits. That means if you go to any Massachusetts public college, UMass, Boston, Amherst, Worcester State, Pittsburgh, Framingham, any of those, you'll get those courses. This is a liberal arts-driven curriculum at this point, but they will be taught at CHS. We've had two teachers approved to teach them, Richard Quirk and Ellen Welsh. Mr. Quirk's approved to teach English 101 and 102, and Ellen Welsh has been approved for economics, micro and macro. So those are the four classes. Obviously, seniors next year wouldn't be able to get 12 credits, but any junior going in next year will be able to take English 101 and microeconomics. Senior, take English 102 and then macroeconomics, two semesters, or a semester each, leaving with 12 credits, basically a freshman year, first semester, you know. Like I said, it's a liberal arts pathway, it's mass transferable. And to get into these classes, they're gonna have to take the Accuplacer test. We're not looking to, for the highest achievers to all jump on this, but this is, this is for anybody who can place in the Accuplacer at that level. We don't want to give kids courses they can't achieve at. If they can achieve at it, we give them this course, they can get both high school and college credit. By the way, the English 101 would replace junior English, English 102 would replace senior year English. When I said this to my son, he's like, so what do you mean? I can take like English 101 my junior year, first semester, and you're done with junior English? I'm like, yeah. Really? Yeah. And then you can take economics second half, so you kind of do that whole thing.
Scott, what do we know about those credits being transferable to private colleges versus just public? Have you asked that question?
As of right now, we don't know. Right now, I do know, I can check on that, but I don't know the answer to that yet. I do know right now that they should mass transfer.
Perfect.
Student have to pay for the college class?
So the best part about is, if we went to Quincyman, it would cost us $225 or $250 per student, per class. If any of us were to take a college course, it's about $250 per credit, so it's about $750 per course. These guys are getting it for $250 for the entire course. Because we're bringing it to Clinton High School, we have our teachers approved, it's costing us $100 per student, per course. It's something that Dr. Meyer is gonna look into, maybe budgeting for next year, so the students.
Yeah, we should be able to, through our Title IV grant, either try to make that either free or, or at least have a pocket of money for financial assistance, so that cost is not a barrier. But $100 for a college course is pretty good.
Well, the more you get online curriculum going, save your money on textbooks, you'll have some extra money to reallocate anyway, in some way, shape, or form.
We're hoping that in the future, after next year, if this takes off this year with students, we're hoping to get 20, 40 students sign up for it. If it goes well next year, we're hoping we can go back to Quincyman, tap on the courses, like a math and a science, or a couple of science classes, and then give the kids more choices. But right now, we have, like I said, the liberal arts pathway with the economics. Up here, I want to go back to, right there, Google Classroom. Google Classroom I used for multiple, multiple years. I just want to show this to you. This goes back to, it's so small. So back when I was teaching physics classes, this is one of my freshman classes, you can see where I would add the assignments for the week here. I put this up every Thursday, so by Friday, they knew what their homework was for the week, or the next week. They go through and do that. There's also other assignments that are posted. These are actually homework assignments, where they, when they watch a video and comment on it, or even up here. Conflict circuits, those actually, if I, I can't click on it, because there are students' grades attached to it, but there's actually, when you open it up, there's a sheet there with directions on what to do with another sheet, where they would collaborate on the answers, they could post all of their data there. There's one big data sheet and you can see everybody's, every student's data there as they collect it. So it's a way of just getting them to collaborate. You can also do, I would do online quizzes using Google Forms. So when the student would come in, they'd sit down, they would take an open notebook, as I call it, open notebook quiz. When they take that quiz, as soon as they hit submit, they'd get a grade. And so it was just a quicker way of getting feedback to them. Do you have any questions on anything I showed you so far?
No, I just, I think it's awesome, because when we, I remember when, when Steve had first sort of started and we got together and there was, there was committees in the strategic plan and sort of where are we trying to take the kids? And then I was able to serve with, with some of these folks on the technology committee, the subcommittee. And I remember sitting in a room with you over at the elementary school and talking about one-to-one and, and could we do it and how would we do it? And spending five years selling education technology to schools and knowing how important it is and that the world that they're going into is not the world that we came into, and seeing this is super exciting to me, because it just shows that that work we put in way back when, when it was just on a piece of paper and like 25 of us on poster boards in the cafeteria, we're making progress towards things that are meaningful for the kids. I think it's awesome. I think it's great.
The things that are going on really is.
It's great.
I could go all night long on this, because I get excited when I talk about this, but I don't want to keep it.
Yeah, I would just add to that, I think it's exciting to be, you know, advocating as a school committee for a public school district, recognizing that, that you can open the world to our students, that not, not only through, you know, the experience of STEM Week and through, you know, experience-based learning, but, but also recognizing that, you know, in 2019, we can have students participate in a number of different courses that, that a decade earlier, we would be too small to offer. And, and that's really exciting for me. And I commend you all for it.
That's great. It's awesome.
I think just two things I would say, is I know when we, I remember when we first tried to present this to the faculty, once we kind of knew it was gonna happen and we were talking about it, and we really tried to emphasize that, you know, the whole point of one-to-one is not just to save paper, right? We don't want to just do the same stuff, but on, on paper, or, you know, we went on a computer. And it's really trying to say, how can we get those things, like you mentioned, the collaboration, creation, you know, simulations, those types of things that they might not otherwise be able to, like you mentioned, opening it up. And then just one other note, I know we did, we had budgeted for, in our budget last year, as we were going through, there was a budget for, there was a line item for history textbooks, or it was included in the, in textbooks. And when we talked about it, we said, why don't we hold on the history textbooks right now? And let's see if they can come in over the summer and put this together to do U.S. History 1 and, or whatever, the two, the freshman and sophomore course.
1 and 2.
1 and 2. If they could get those done electronically, since now we know we're gonna have one-to-one in those grades. And like you said, almost the whole department came in and they worked and they put it together and they were able to find these, basically equity, you know, open, free resources that are put together through like equity projects. And so then we've already seen how we kind of shifted that, you know. We still have that money kind of in reserve if they need something along the way, but it's, you know, but it's, but we did kind of reallocate a little bit to have them bring in and do that. And I think it was, it was definitely a lot cheaper than textbooks, so.
And is there a communication component to this as well? I mean, I know the one that I use, they, we can talk back and forth. Is that in this also, where they could ask you a question on an assignment?
So if you use Google Classroom, so for instance, see right here, it says add classroom in.
Yeah.
That's where students if.
Excellent. Yeah.
Yeah, so they can go back and forth, there's open notebook quiz, videos, can I go way back? I don't want to keep you on that.
No, I just know some students may feel more comfortable asking a question in this format than in a classroom.
There's different ways you can do it. So really quickly, I can post something and I can post a question with it.
Yeah.
They can answer that question, and then you can set it so students can converse back and forth on the question or the video, or you can set it so they can only answer your question, or so they can ask a question and you can set it to one response, or it's amazing what you can do with it. It just keeps getting bigger and bigger. Just like anything else, you need to get into it, you need to get into it now, so it's just getting bigger, it's growing. And what I love about it, the last thing I say, I promise, what I love about Google Classroom is it's one place that the students can go and they can see all of their classes. For instance, when I go, I can't work the mouse. All right. When I go here, those are my classes from last year. And you can see, we also have the CHS English Department, and we have just different things there. But a student, when they go home, they can go on and they see all their classes there. And the teachers are posting their work there. So kid, he was sick today or she was sick today, they can go there and they can grab their work from there. It's just an easy way of going back and forth. They can email their teacher or send a note to their teacher here, teacher gets a message, email it back, or just message it back right through here. So it really is, it's the way to go. I'm really proud of the high school staff, because they all jumped on it and we're all doing it, trying.
And this is how they'll work in the real world. This is how I work at my job. We use Google Docs, we use Microsoft Office 365. Everything's online, nobody writes anything. It's just the way you communicate. It's the way, if knowledge is gonna be at your fingertips, they have to know where to go find it. And I think it's great. I think we should double down and figure out a way to get more of it for younger, for the youngest grades, I tell you. Keep it moving.
Chromebooks for the board.
Keep it moving. I like it. It's exciting.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. So the next thing I had, just an update on the statewide system of support. So, you can see, I included an agenda from a meeting we had on October 9th with the statewide system of support, that's basically the team that we would be working with, with the elementary school. You can see Tom Lamy is our district assistance lead. He's a former curriculum director and superintendent from Pittsburgh. I've worked with him in the past. He's a, he's a good guy to work with. I think he really understands, he understands this area well, and so he's a good resource and good to be supportive. So we met with them, talked about some things. There's another couple of handouts here of what the statewide system of support, you know, what they do, sort of their brochure. This next sheet that says Clinton Elementary School, that one was, this is what I prepared to give to them in our meeting, so they had our contact information, some contacts. You can see there, I did put those MCAS scores in there, I think, I don't know if I've shared them in this format with you, but I think the big thing you can see is that we've actually improved in Grade III ELA, and we've improved in Grade III and IV Mathematics. Really, we just, our big drop was the Grade IV ELA. So I think that's, you know, we've really looked at it, and that we've kind of narrowed that in as sort of our area of focus, and not just Grade IV, but just in general, kind of that transition to the ELA curriculum. So that's just, you know, this is just some of the things that we've done. They asked us for kind of what our needs were, and, you know, basically, we said that, you know, we had to build the teacher capacity to implement Reader's Workshop model, building instructional assistant capacity. We talked about some of our staffing challenges with that. And our English learners are making sure we're implementing an effective English learner curriculum, and a review of the current EL model and best practices. So that's kind of where we stood with them. They asked us a lot of questions. If you remember, we talked about how we're working with Looney Math this year as a consultant in our math program, and they started asking us a whole lot of questions about Looney Math. And in my head, the way the questioning was going, I'm sitting there thinking, "Oh, man, what do they have against Looney Math," right? Like, because I thought I was being, like, set up. And then come to find out, they actually, the state has their own contract with Looney Math, because they don't have enough math support for schools in the state. So they've actually given us, we actually had 20 additional days with Looney Math through this.
Through the state grant.
Through the state.
Terrific.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's a lot of support. So then the next, oh, so then you see that the, there's a letter in here about, explains a little more about the statewide system of support, and the sustainable improvement planning process, and all those sorts of things. So we'll be working on that throughout the year, working with them. The next thing in here, I just have a district self-assessment completion plan. Remember, we have the comprehensive district review. So these are the six areas that we really need to focus on. Each of those six indicators probably, each of those six areas probably has three or so indicators with it. You can see the leadership and governance one is actually included after that. And so I'm just trying to figure out how we, you know, how we best want to break that down, so I tried to get it in sort of a manageable timeline. So my plan is to, I'm just going to go through the leadership and governance one, and try to answer the questions the best I can by the end of this week. We have an administrative team meeting on the 28th, so I'm going to share that with our administrative team to kind of get their feedback. And then I'll plan on putting that in a packet, so that the school committee can review that on November 4th, and we can maybe get some feedback from you on that. And then hopefully, by like, almost November 8th, and that's, I picked a target, but it could be a little bit later than that, but hopefully, it can just have one section that we feel comfortable with, right? And in doing this process, if we come up with something, you know, by starting on this process now, if we came up with something, let's say there was a policy that they asked us to have, and we realized we don't have it.
Sure.
Well, we have time to create it, you know? I mean, that's part of the self-study. They tell you, it's not, you know, they want you to come across something that you're not, you're not doing, fix it, you know? So we can, we can look at that. So, and we have a curriculum instruction committee meeting coming up on 23rd. I plan on sharing the curriculum instruction and the assessment sections with them to start working on getting input from, from those leaders as well. So, I think it'll be a big undertaking, you know, to pull it all together, but I think, you know, just we'll stay organized, and we'll get it done. And then I shared this one, you can see what the, what the leadership and governance questions are. So, like I said, I'll try to go through and give us sort of what I think is my ranking, and I'll try to fill in some narratives, and then I'll share it with, like, our administrative team to see what they think, and then we'll bring it to, bring it to the committee, to the school committee, so you guys can get your input in there, too. So, the next one in there is just, it says update to the Board of Selectmen. So I met with the Board of Selectmen on October 16th, and I just kind of gave an overall update on, you know, I wanted to share with them about our accountability ratings, and just kind of what we're doing, and so I shared with them with them. And since I gave this to them as a handout, I wanted to give it to you as a handout as well, I didn't want you to, them getting information that you didn't have. And just kind of goes over the same type of thing. The last thing on here, you can see on this handout I gave them, are some budget updates. That's actually from the Student Opportunity Act, that's the governor's office estimates. It says, "Not for planning purposes," because it's just sort of estimates, so it's not necessarily set in stone. But if you look at that, if the Student Opportunity Act were to go through, our Chapter 78 would increase by approximately 100 and, sorry, 1.5 million next year, and it would increase a little over 5 million by FY '27. So, that's, that's a significant breakdown. What I shared with the Selectmen was, if you look at the percentage of the, the required local contribution as a percentage of the foundation budget, you notice they're trying to keep that kind of stagnant, which means if they're giving you a lot of money, your local contribution goes up as well, okay? However, it's good to know that, if you look at our end-of-year report, when it captures our total local contribution, including insurance costs, and indirect costs, and partial salaries of the treasurer, and the town accountant, and that kind of stuff, our, our end-of-year reported local contribution is already close to like 14 million. So we're already over, you know, we're over required local contribution. And we weren't at one point, then there was the override, and then now, if you really look at, and when you factor in all those indirect costs, and I look at our end-of-year report, it's not that bad. So I think we'll be okay, as far as Clinton, in terms of meeting that required local contribution, because we're already over it. But we would be getting that 1.5 million or so a year from the state in the, in the Chapter 70, which hopefully allows us to keep moving forward with what we want to move forward with. So then the last, last page I had here was, you know, I need to do, I should do personal goals in addition to the school goals, which we presented a while ago. These are two that I'm proposing for you, and if you're okay with it, then that's good. My student learning goal was to, student learning in grades III through VIII is measured by the 2020 MCAS, will reflect an average scale of score increases at least three points, raising ELA to over 496.7, and math to over 492.15. Particular focus will be placed on supporting the white and high-need subgroups in order to increase their student performance. Essentially, what does that look like? That means basically working with the state system of support, doing those sustainability plans, and trying to work on really just improving our student outcomes for, for the elementary and middle school. I didn't include the high school really necessarily in that, because it's a new, last year was the first year they did the test, so we didn't really have the trends to see kind of what's going to happen with that. And then for my professional practice goal, I said, "By June of 2020, Clinton Volk's Schools will successfully complete all aspects of the comprehensive district review. This includes successful completion of the district self-assessment by February 14th, facilitating the on-site visit from March 16th to 19th, and completing any required follow-up actions." So, you know, I kind of aligned these goals to the two things we just talked about, the statewide system of support we were working with, and the district comprehensive review. So, those would be my personal goals, so I don't, I'm, you know, I'm welcome to, you know, and I just throw them out as a draft, so it's a, whatever your pleasure is on those comments or questions.
Pleasure of the board.
Do you think those are reasonable goals?
Any other thoughts? So I have a question.
Yes.
With regard to the student learning goal, it is, I mean, I think it's commendable, I think, but is it, do you feel as though your work, what's the level of impact that you as a superintendent can have on that goal?
I think this year, given the fact that we'll be working with the statewide system of support, and I will be heavily involved in that, and we'll be looking at creating plans in terms of like, okay, we've got Looney Math Consulting, how are we using Looney Math Consulting, and how are we designing a professional development around that? I think there's some other things that, you know, we're going to need to look at in terms of, you know, how, what are we doing in terms of literacy? How are we supporting our literacy coach? Are we bringing in other consultants for that? So I do think there's some, I mean, I understand, you're right, the question as far as like, I'm not, you know, face-to-face with the kids every day, but I do think that in terms of driving a lot of the, that sustainability improvement plan, like, we're going to be building that as a team, and then we're going to be trying to implement that as a team, and I think it is going to be, you know, I think I'll be pretty, pretty hands-on with that this year, so...
Does that, do those, do those points put the schools III through VIII within the likely target range?
It depends, because the way they do it now, they measure everything, you know, they kind of average everything, right?
Right, so it's normed against the previous year, and then applied to the criterion reference.
And, and the way, like, the way I'm envisioning this is that it'll kind of be like the III through VIII average, right? Which means, hopefully, if we get the, you know, so if everyone got a three-point increase, well, that'd be great, but, you know, it could be that fourth grade gets a...
Well, sure.
...10-point increase, and, you know, another grade didn't do as well, or something like that. So, you know, so I think that, you know, it's, I tried to make, I mean, three points I felt like was reasonable. I tried to keep it reasonable, not, not, not outlandish, but...
So I guess my last question will be the same question that I ask when teachers propose goals to me as a principal. Are they meaningful to you? And if so, then, you know, look forward to discussing the progress.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, like I said, I think I tried to tailor them, I think, this is the same thing I talked to our administrators about, like, I don't want people, don't create a goal for the sake of creating a goal.
Exactly.
Right? And if you really look at, what am I going to be spending a lot of time this year? It's going to be working with the statewide system of support, building that sustainable improvement plan, and really trying to work to say, what action steps are we taking to improve student outcomes? And I think that's what I tried to capture with the student learning goal, by, by making quantifiable in terms of student achievement. In terms of professional practice goal, you know, I think that's, you know, we've got that, that comprehensive district review, and like I said, it's not only just doing the review, but it's also, as we, as we discover things, if we say, "Hey, you know what? We don't really have a good curriculum adoption cycle, so you know what? Let's create one, and let's adopt it," and, and filling in those gaps as we do that review. So I think, you know, I think both of those are really things that are going to be my focus this year, which is why I tried to propose those goals.
So is this also a team focus, too? I mean, you talked about, you talked about a team as well.
It is, but I think, I mean, when I set my, you know, obviously, like, Rob is the principal, will be working with the statewide system of support with me all along, but like, when we set our own goals, his might be slightly different than mine, so that's why I didn't make it a team goal, although they're all going to feed into each other.
Would someone like to make a motion to, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's goals?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Being unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think that's all I have.
Yep. So the Curriculum Committee meets Wednesday?
Yep.
Anything from the Safety Committee?
Oh, we're meeting on 30th.
It meets Wednesday also, next Wednesday.
Oh.
Marketing is the 14th.
14th, sorry, that's, yeah.
Marketing is on the 14th.
At 5:00 PM.
So, under policies and procedures, the Policy Subcommittee met, and would offer to you, for your consideration, the MASC model policy that was provided last, and I don't think it's in your packets.
It's not in their packets. We can present it at the next meeting, if you want to do the formal adoption of it, but...
Yeah, so I'll just give you an overview, that we wanted a little more time in terms of the existing language that we have around advertising, and the selling of advertising on school district property, but I think we're in a pretty good place with our existing policy right now, in that the, the right of refusal comes to this board for a vote. With regard to the, the policy on memorials, that I think, you know, we had a great discussion, and I think we certainly want to respect those memorials that are, are in place around the schools and school district, but, but also have, you know, as a responsible approach to that notion moving forward. So, we thought that the MASC model policy was a good one and served our needs, so we'll bring that forward to you in our next meeting. Anything else on that?
Okay. Facilities, I think you met rest just before the last meeting, so we had an update on that, yeah.
Yeah. Is there anything under new business, uh, old business?
So, sorry. Go back to negotiations, yeah.
Sorry.
So, if you remember the, you know, really when we were in the, Ed was on the Negotiations Subcommittee last time, and then, really, we've kind of been, we haven't started like the new cycle, but we have some things that are obviously ongoing.
And we're down a member.
And we're down, so basically, we only have one member, so I don't know if we wanted to, and I don't think we ever appointed one when we did the other subcommittees, so I don't know if we wanted...
And so currently...
It's just Brenny.
Mr. Bailey. Would someone like to serve with Mr. Bailey with regard to negotiations?
I'm not, I try not to serve Mr. Bailey on anything, but Bren, I'll do it for you.
Thank you.
Anytime.